Is she fading out again?
No, she was finishing the warrants and all of that.
I mean, is she?
She's doing pretty good for the most part, I think. I'm using pretty well through the through the cockpit. She got there about something thirty, forty, five minutes in.
Here.
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 Here. Everyone's had a chance to read the previous minutes of January the ninth. As you know, changes, they stand approved. Need a motion to amend the agenda, please.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Second.
Second, no one in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna skip the vacation for just a minute. Let's just do it now. Got it down, the bottom two, let's just do it now.
You'd rather do it once?
I'd rather just do it once before they done it twice. Do it once this time, let's see what we're at right now. Before we start on it, I've got something I'd like to say about it, and then we can go from there. First of all, I think most of you know that I've got nothing, I see nothing wrong with the old policy that we've got. It's been here a long time, it's worked. All I wanted to do was just correct one little thing on it. And, because I didn't take the handbook, approved that part, still don't think of that. But the, the old policy is simple and easy to understand, and the guys understand it fine, they've been using it for years. The old, the old system's not broken, it works, it just needs to be tweaked a little bit. And I'll explain to you, if I understand Noel correctly, why I do not object to accruing at all. I understand it, and it, it works, I mean, we got two guys here that have used it. My objection is taking everybody that we've got and bringing them all together at one time from the old vacation plan into accrual. And it's my contention that it's gonna cost us quite a little bit of money to do that. The first year, well, the second year it'll be normal, but the first year in order to bring everybody in, and I'll, I'll give you an example of what will happen. Let's take let's take a May first hire date. And again, this is assuming I understood Noel correctly. May the first of two thousand seventeen. We're going to award that person, let that person be awarded. This is a person with six weeks vacation. Twenty hours each month, all the way around to their hire date.
No, until February, if we adopted for February first, it would be till February first.
Well, on May the first, how much would that person have?
That would be twenty hours.
Twenty hours.
Yeah. So that would be from
You're gonna have May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December, January, February, ten months?
Well, no.
Or nine?
Be January, so it'll be nine months of, so it'll be a hundred and eighty hours that they would be given.
It's a hundred and eighty hours, so nothing, nothing from February, from January the first to May?
Yeah, they, they will get twenty hours a month at that point.
Only wait a month?
Yeah, but they will, it'll only get twenty hours each month. At the end of the month, like the start of Mar- of March will award February's hours.
So they have twenty hours.
Right.
But if you start May the first of seventeen last year, we're gonna award twenty?
They're gonna have a hundred and eighty hours, nine months.
Okay, until, through January?
Yeah, that's, that stops.
Okay, what happened from January to May?
Then they start accruing twenty hours every month.
Some more.
Right.
So by the time May the first comes, they've acquired the full six weeks.
Right, by the time of their anniversary, it's a full six weeks.
So we've got six weeks on May the first. Then, on May the first, each month thereafter, we're awarded twenty hours.
Actually, it'd be June, because they'd be awarded in the following month, actually, they'll complete the month, so in June.
Whenever, whenever it begins, the next year, we start accruing twenty hours each month. So at the end of the year, from two thousand two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, we've gotten six weeks. From two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, we've got another six weeks.
No, yeah, so, to, to nineteen, yes.
Okay, so, in the old plan, this person would have earned six weeks the first of May, but gotten nothing in this year, until they had gone the full year. Had gone the full year, they would earn another six weeks. So what we've done here with the accrue is we've given six weeks, which is fine, but we're also giving another six weeks in that year, and you don't do that on the old plan. And that's gonna happen with every single employee. And when you figure that, which we did, we're all, we're about thirty-five or thirty-six employees, it came out to a hundred, almost a hundred and four thousand dollars that would cost the city in one year.
Possibly.
Now, that's just uh, no, yeah, that's, everybody gets a full year accrual. So that's the way we figured that. If you got, some would gain more than others, depending on how many weeks you got. That's, that's the cost of bringing everybody up to par to put them on accrual in that one year. That's, that's, that's part of the prorating that we were doing, instead of just doing a little bit once in a while, we're gonna do that all at one time. Now, that one year, we're gonna have to pay, the next year, that won't be the case. But we'll have one year.
That, but that's assuming that that person, each person would use all of their vacation, and on next year, they would have, start out with zero, where there was probably gonna be some that won't, that would carry over, that's not gonna be used all.
There will, but whether they use this or not, we've awarded it. And if you award it, it costs us, because, I, let's say this person that's got six weeks, at the end of another year, if they didn't use it, that's just a supposition. You can put back, if we chose to do that, you can put back two weeks, because you can't keep more than that.
Right.
If I understand it right, you'd still have ten weeks. Uh, no.
If they didn't use.
If you hadn't used any.
Because once they hit, if they have six weeks, once they hit eight weeks, they stop accruing. They, they cannot accrue anymore until they get down below that threshold again. So there's no, but the most they can accumulate
Well, what you can do is sell them.
Although, but only those employees that have been here over fifteen years.
Well,
How many, how many? Just to get an option.
Fifteen, sixteen, some.
About of those, we figured about thirty percent. We figured it on about thirty-six people, so you can see we're, we're heavy on the on the four to six weeks. We're, we're heavy on those that were hired before oh six. So nobody would save it just to lose it. No, if I thought I was gonna lose it, I'd sell it, so that happens.
But they can only cash in half of their yearly award, so if they've got six weeks, all they can cash in is three weeks. Five weeks, two and a half weeks, four weeks, two weeks, and that's it in one year. So I mean, that, they can't build it up, cash it in.
Build it up, cash it in. Well, I guess I hadn't, I hadn't looked at it at the point like David mentioned there. I was thinking if you cashed it in, it's gonna cost you, but it's gonna cost you either way you look at it, because you're awarding that much more, so. It's gonna, it may not cost you the whole six weeks if somebody cashes it in, but it's gonna cost you some. But if you're awarding it, it's gonna cost you the full amount. I mean, if you're, whether they cash it in or not, it's gonna be six weeks, or four weeks or five weeks, it's still gonna be, right?
Okay, yeah, they'll get that vacation you used at the start of the program.
Okay. And my, my suggestion, my, my suggestion, and I read it last time, I'll read it again, what we did on, when we changed from six weeks to three, we put a little addendum in there, and it said employees hired prior June thirteenth oh six will continue with the current vacation procedures set out above, and that was the one where you got four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, depending on how long you'd work. Every employee holding a permanent status position for twelve consecutive months shall have earned vacation leave with pay. Vacation leave shall be earned as follows. One week after one consecutive year of employment, two weeks after three consecutive years of employment, and three weeks after five consecutive years of employment. That's what's in there right now. What I, my suggestion to add is, all current employees will be eligible upon retirement or separation from service to be paid for unused vacation time, plus a prorated estimate of vacation time for the next year. After January the first two thousand nineteen, the prorated portion of vacation time will be discontinued, and payment will strictly be for unused vacation time, which is the way the handbook states it now. So what do you do, David? Do you just keep the handbook and make an amendment? Amend, amend the handbook in that one area?
I think.
And I think that's all.
I think Larry mentioned something about the last time that we were doing, what we were doing was actually giving vacation that wasn't earned, and that would be considered a bonus, and we can't do that, so. But my understanding is that our policy, well, policy that we've been following, of paying accrued vacation, even though it's not written down, has become actual policy, correct, Larry?
It has, and I, I am thinking if the auditors had ever written us up for that, you know, doing that and considering it a bonus. The auditors have never written us up for that, is that correct? That was a big concern that I had.
Well, my, my concern is that we've been administering it incorrectly.
I think that is.
And, it's not a big hiccup. I'd just like to see it fixed, so we don't do it that way.
If we if we change that, or that one year, what's the legal ramifications from that, from the person that retires after that?
I suppose that it was, you know, potentially a cause of action against the city.
And based off of our previous actions, we
But you wouldn't be more liable to do that than we did when we changed the vacation time, would you?
But it would be the same, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Either way.
I mean, it's an amended handbook.
Right.
It's what it is.
But if you amend it, if we change
I hate to say one thing, we did something else.
Right.
Right.
That's why it's got us in the crap. We can fix, we can fix the handbook.
Yeah, I think what Noel was saying, though, it's, it would be exactly the same if we went with the accrued monthly. I mean, the, the liability, the liability could possibly be the same if somebody wanted to come back on. No, if, if we go with this, there is no liability because you're paying out the accruals, like we have been, so there's nothing for them to come back.
Because they're written policy.
Legally, legally nothing for them to come back to, because that's policy now.
Yeah, right, if we were to go with this, I don't think there's any
Well, my, my contention is we are.
We're practicing it, whether we're
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna be paying the prorated part in order to get us up to where we can do the accrual.
But it would need to be clarified in the handbook where it's prorated, right?
Which is what I would Well, if, if we stay the same, yes.
Yeah.
But I, I don't, I don't see there's any more harm than, than giving some time in there like we have in amending the handbook, and doing our best to correct.
Other than we'll still be liable on down the road.
Well, we're, we're always gonna be liable.
But not to that effect. Now, let me throw something else in here, if, if I was an employee that had twenty, I've had six weeks of vacation, and say I want, I'm thinking about retiring, and I re, I say, I'm gonna retire halfway through my year, I'm not gonna get my vacation. So, instead of retiring, I'm gonna work another six months to get that vacation, so we, we paid out another six, another three weeks of vacation for those other six months, plus six months of salary that might not have had to been paid out if they could retire at any point and get their vacation. Can I understand well? Yeah, it would be, I understand, it would be a possibility, the salary's gonna be there. Right, so I mean Retire, it might be at a lesser rate.
Yeah.
But salary's still gonna be paid out, whether they're retired in June or December, because if they're not there, somebody's gonna be growing. Right, but it's gonna be at a
Be a lesser rate.
Be a lesser rate, yeah. If you, a little bit, yeah.
You know, I wonder how we, you know, how we got started, you know, paying accrual when people would leave employment. The only thing, thing I can come up with is that somewhere along the line, the administration has decided when we've had an employee leave nine months into their year, that the fair and equitable treatment to that employee would be to pay him for nine months out of that year. Under the annual accrual rate, what happens is if an employee, for some reasons, health reasons, whatever reason, has to leave employment eleven months and twenty-nine days into the year, they lose six weeks vacation. They don't get it, because they have to reset anniversary day. That's an extreme measure, but I mean, you know, whether it's six months.
That's the way, that's the way it is, if you don't complete the year, you don't get, you don't have the vacation.
And that's why I'm thinking that the reason we've been paying out vacation when people leave halfway through the year, we pay them for six months vacation as though they've accrued it, because somewhere along the line, the administration has decided that's the fair and equitable thing to do, because they've worked half a year, so we should give them half years of vacation pay, instead of just offering that six months vacation. I don't know that that's why we've been treating it that way, but I have to assume that somewhere along the line, somebody's decided that fair and equitable treatment of our employees would be to pay them for the portion of year that they've worked. And we won't be doing that by, you know, if we go by the written policy now, which is an annual accrual, instead of a monthly accrual.
But we can change the wording on that on the handbook, though, can't we, to go by a monthly deal like, just to address the we were talking about, couldn't we? What now? Couldn't we change the handbook like to address that like if somebody retarded halfway through the year? And, and because the way we're doing it now is considered a bonus.
Yes, it can be changed.
No, I don't think it is, because the auditors haven't said that, that was my concern.
Oh, that was your concern, okay.
So I, I checked with Peggy to make sure we hadn't gotten rid of that, and we have not.
So barely, change it to exactly what it is. Six months, seven months.
We can do that.
And no more.
But
Just get what you earn.
Wasn't, I mean, that's what we're looking
Isn't that fair?
Isn't that what we're looking for?
That's, that's what we, that's the way we've been treating it, in a fast.
Well, then let's change the handbook to address what we've been doing, and let's keep the same system and go on down.
Just prorated.
Yeah, I think that's what, is that what you were proposing? I mean, I think that's all you were proposing, as I understood.
Now, can we, we can do that, I mean, just With that pointing at the handbook and prorating where everybody's being exactly. Do we can do another one?
I think we can, just make an amendment, can't we? We've already got the handbook. Let Larry and, let Larry and I work the amendment up, and we'll bring it back
We'll be amending the order.
For approval. We'll bring it, bring it for approval for the next meeting.
Something, the suggestion on the back page there of the vacation
We got it here.
Yeah, I mean, with that separation policy there, be acceptable?
The back page?
On the back page.
I remember it had to do with separation, is that what it said?
Yeah.
It had to be as
I mean, we'll, we'll have to change just a few wording, because there's no maximum accrual anymore. Back.
I did, I've got, well, I, I know it had to do with This one?
Yeah, last page of that.
So you would have to change that wording from their birth date, if they left three months after their their birth date, then they would receive three twelfths vacation pay.
We would, we would just have to with a little bit of rework, would that be, would that part of the policy be acceptable?
Except for these guys.
Well, it, it is, the one thing that I noticed there, it says there may be a forfeiter, which means that that's gonna be left up to somebody to make that decision. Do, can we can we put it in there that there is a forfeiter?
Yeah.
That's, I, I mean, I don't know, and when you say it may be, that, that means that if, if I got made a key, it would be.
My son, he goes, you'd be lucky in these things here, David. Violation of
Because that, that's part of
Of the Christmas con.
That's part of what we're talking about.
So there will be no
Yeah, and if you don't mind, Larry and I will work on that, and we'll present it to you. To you, and I'll try to get it to those of you that have emailed on this.
What's the email?
I have to send it to Penny. Penny will have to get it out for us, but I can, I, let us rewrite it and send it to you, so that you have the advance of the next meeting. Okay, and we change the handbook and reflect what we're doing.
We don't really do anything until we get
Could you get the, the handbook, the ordinance change?
I can't deliver that to Penny, so.
I will, I'll give it to Penny. Because I can hear Penny in the background telling me how I had to put your name in, and I
Every time I look at it, I'm like, that computer, my head sure is spinning, you get ahead, and I'm just committed, I've lost it.
Okay. I think you did my head in the same, Suzanne, with Suzanne. The fire truck.
So we're, we are holding off or tabling that ordinance?
We're not tabling that, we're just we can table it, but we're, but we're gonna take care of it at the next meeting. Pending
Pending.
Pending approval of the ordinance.
So we have a resolution, and that is for the fire truck pumper, the pumper truck purchase that we, we've done last, last meeting. The resolution number twenty eighteen oh one oh three authorizing the mayor to sign financial paperwork on the pumper truck for the fire department, and it says a resolution of governing body dated today's date between Welch State Bank and Lester, Ed Lester, and
I'll make the motion that we authorize the mayor to, to take care of that financial
I'll say it, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll say it. You've got the the, kind of the quotes and the bid in there on those generators, and I was kind of shocked by it, I, I didn't have any idea about the cost. Generally, general terms of estimate of the cost for one treatment plant, seventy-five thousand, for the police station, twenty-five, and for city hall, twenty-five. Those, those we had to get in order for Skokka to submit the grant. And I did check to be sure, Johnny and Cody Bowden, that if we have a couple of grants come in, and we don't feel we have the money, we don't have to accept those grants. But we'll take a good hard look at it, because we'd be able, for twenty-five percent of that hundred and twenty-five, to get some walking generators, and, and you know we're gonna have something else happen. We're just going to. In, in the meantime, John Brefick was down here one day, and he had a client that, that, that had a, now, the big, the big one for our treatment plant, I don't know what it is, three hundred
KV's, something.
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
This guy had one that was a hundred and seventy-four, and wanted to give it to the city for a donation, and I told him, I thought, you know, assuming it works. And, so I had to talk to him more to him about it, but, you know, we may end up we, we've got a generator out at the reservoir, and we've got a generator out here at the well. And if they give us that, I mean, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna have anything big enough for an water treatment plant, but we will our wells in probably city hall, even if we don't get the grant. So, we don't know yet, it's been submitted, but we
I think just for size wise, I'm pretty sure that a lot of the generators, like residential generators, aren't they seventeen, eighteen KV? Yeah. To kind of give you a perspective of Yeah, the smallest one is about a seven, and now they run up to eighteen, twenty. Like the, the ones that they mount, permanently outside. Yeah, stand-by generator. Aren't they fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, something like that? KV's?
You've got, you've got one man of that size.
Yeah, I, I've got a seven.
Is it a
That's the smallest, yeah.
Really?
That's the smallest you can get.
A seven.
Well, or eight, I think it is.
Is it just the lights mostly?
You pick and choose on that.
Yeah.
Well, she's got refrigerator, you know.
Yeah, I've got, I've got refrigerator, lights.
Separate generators?
No, it's, it's all on one, it's, it's, it's eight circuits is what it is, so. I, I think the seventeen, eighteen, Andy and I, they will run most of your household. Yeah.
Well, we don't know where we are with it, but eventually, the bids on those generators was delivered and installed, which is no small task. Our guys can't install those. So even if we move ours around, which we're going to, we'll have to hire a company to come in, maybe to move them, especially the one out here. Jeff Kofler said, he wants that one, if we don't get the others, he'll want, well, anyway, he's gonna want the one there to go to the cemetery. But we'll have to hire somebody to put them up. So we don't know yet, but that's where we are on that. Public hearing on the grant will be January the thirty-first, it'll be here between four and four-thirty, that's on the park. I don't know if I said that or not, not the square, the bar. And you know, we talked about what we were gonna do, we had Andy Anderson down here, he went down and looked at the where we want the path to go down the backside, and where we'd want the bridge, and he looked at all that, he had a surveyor down there today, surveying elevations, he took pictures of the old bridge, bottom, top, all over it, and I talked to him yesterday to be sure that he was engineering the path and lighting, plus the bridge, we're gonna need, for the grant, we have to have the materials separated out, because and then we're gonna wanna know an estimate on the labor, because we're gonna donate the labor, and then I wanted him to give us an estimate of what he thought the engineering cost might be, before we jumped up and said we'd pay for that, and that'd be in kind, you know, if it's gonna be ten thousand dollars, we might need to let it go into the grant. So, anyway, there's a process of doing that, that has to be in the So, anyway, there's a process of doing that. That has to be in by the seventeenth or eighteenth of February. We're trying to get our stuff together by the first and we've got most of it together. We've gotten our, our letters of support and. The only thing we don't have yet, I had to have a letter from the school authorizing Ray Davidson in the shop to do the work on the bridge. We don't have that yet, but I've called them. They're getting that for us. We had several inquiries. Had a phone call today in regard to Verizon and what we were doing in order to have better cellphone service. So, I talked to him a little bit. The other day, after all that on Facebook, I sent an email to James Cardinal with Verizon and I know he thought I was trying to get him to come back, put it on the tower. But I just told him, everybody's calls are getting dropped. I had Verizon and, you know, anyway. Got an email back and he says that he's in, been talking to the county, trying to get that worked out with the county, that they're getting the drawings together. And he asked, he didn't know what he's asking for, but what are you asking for? A packet to approve a variance in an ordinance. You can't say in an ordinance, you can't have communication towers unless you put it where I want it. You can't do that. Communication tower has the right to come in, but we also have the right to have an ordinance that says it can't be two hundred feet tall when houses within a hundred feet. I mean, some of that kind of stuff. You can't put it in someone's backyard. So, the things in the ordinance are a little restrictive, but not outrageous by any means. There's a provision for them to apply for a variance. And if the high building tower is such and it meets the other things with the variance, which planning and ordinance will look at, then they'll be granted a variance, but it's tower up where, above White River on that lot. So, I don't know if I even emailed him back, but he just sit there in negotiation with the county. So, when I talked to the guy today, that's what I told him. I said, the county's negotiating. He said, well, what about a timeline? I said, I wouldn't look for it within a year. I said, they gotta build the tower. You know, I don't know. No faster than James Cardinal moves. I think they'll be lucky.
We see it here.
Just like a fifty or sixty foot tower. Well, maybe. I think the limit actually is gonna be seventy-five feet, but it's up high.
And where is that location I'm not following you?
Up above the jail, up where White River used to be.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Know where those houses were torn down.
County property.
County property. So, that's where we are on that. We've had another request or two in regard to naming that trail after Kathy. They didn't know we'd already brought it up.
Yeah.
To. To, to the council.
I've had a few calls and a lot of positive input.
Yeah. I have too. And many of you seen Brian lately?
No, no.
Well, he's.
Talked to him a couple of days ago.
Awfully thin. My gosh.
Yeah, I thought there was something wrong with Brian.
Yeah, Brian, yeah, I did too. I tell you what we can do. We can, if we have a motion, we can name it. I've forgotten what her middle initial is, but whatever it is, Kathy W. Thompson or whatever it is, trail. And we probably, we may put a dedicated such and such date so that we know when the trail started or something like that. And we can put that. I'll talk to Sherry wherever she thinks the most appropriate place is where it seemed to the most. Most people start in the lower part.
Yeah, you know, maybe there on, on the bridge either, you know, going both ways.
Well, we might have a motion signed, yeah. But if you want to make a motion to do that, I'll see that it gets done. We have at least two signs.
I talked to a person today that was in the city administration at the time Kathy was working on that. And they, this person said Kathy was, was.
Relentless.
Relentless. That's a good word. And, you know, she thought, she made several trips to Jeff City. She was just getting the car and go up there. She thought it, a person to person talk with somebody that, you know, she needed to do that to get this thing moving.
I wasn't involved in it, but I definitely heard that Kathy was relentless.
David, what, did you want, you wanted her name on it with, with the date that the trail was originated?
Suggestion we might put when the trail was dedicated. We know that, what, ninety, ninety-six maybe?
Yeah.
We can look back in the minutes. We did. And I think that's when it was.
Well, I would, I would make that motion that we.
Dedicate the trail. We get a middle initial.
Second to motion there.
Okay. All right.
Done.
I, I, okay. So, be it. Tonight, this committee of the Chamber of Commerce, whatever the committee is down on the square, is meeting. And I've asked them to pick a time in February that would be convenient for them to hold the public meeting. The proposal came out of that committee. So, I'll hear from Dick or Sound God or something. Acal. Acal. Ava Citizens, Ava Citizens Action Committee or Ava.
To hold the public here and here?
Huh?
Here.
And I, and I told them that unless they wanted to have it someplace else, that this would be where we'd do it. And when we get together to talk about it, I'm gonna guess it's probably gonna be at five o'clock so that those of us. I'll have to talk to SkoC because they're the ones gonna actually be conducting the meeting. And they may have, they may wanna have it. I don't know when they wanna have it. We haven't set the time. But we've gotten most of the information we need in order to have the public hearing. Anyway, I'll let you, I'll let you know on that. We, we've had a couple, and I've mentioned this, we've had a couple of areas of concern by people. Some people just don't wanna change. Chris Volga is one of them. She just admitted I still wanna change. The first concern's been the parking. And let me tell you, we've watched the parking on that square closer than I have in the last ten years. And I guarantee you that if we take the parking spaces out of the middle and we reduce overall parking to somewhere between twelve to sixteen, that it's not in any way gonna hurt parking on the square. I went around the square one day last week. We had two places open, two on the east and two on the west, and that's it. We still got two or three places parking in front of their own business, but it will not affect customer parking on the square. It just doesn't. We've been there to look on court days. The big court day was the first, the first Tuesday or the first full week of the month. And then you've got a couple of Thursdays in the month and court days. You can't even tell they're having a court day. So, the parking, the parking is really not an issue. The other thing, and I keep hearing that we're just gonna have one lane around the square. Look at that. It's a state highway. You know, we got two lanes around the square. There's, this, this, you know, that's not gonna change. Other than that, other than just not wanting grass or just not wanting change, that's the biggest complaint. Some of the complaint, some people want to get together with their cars and meet down on the square. They still be able to do that. They do that at night, you know, when there's nobody open and parking's not an issue. So, farmers market people, we've talked to them and they're in favor of it. They're in favor of it. So, there are lots of little things to be decided, but not on the initial application sent in on the grant. It's a general thing. And what you do is you estimate the cost way high. So, then if you make a change down here, you'll be covered, so. But this is all general stuff. We're not gonna put in there that we might consider taking out the pair of trees and putting maple trees for shade. It's, it's not gonna be like that. If the initial application is accepted, then come back and then we start looking at each little detail of the plan before it starts. So, that's where, that's where they.
Well, if we leave it a parking lot like it is, we're still gonna have to spend a lot of money to make it handicap accessible. We got that to do no matter what.
Yeah, we do. And actually, it'll take up another couple of spaces to do that. And we're gonna have, we're gonna have to end this grant included, making, making handicap adjustments from corner to corner, from jeans to Kate Barnum, Kate Barnum to Lissis, from pregnancy option to the cornhouse. Those four corners, it's all got to be made. Don't you got, you've got, the highway department just run them over there into a curb about that tunnel. I mean, they just run the white paint.
Yeah, sometimes they do a pole.
Or a pole. Those have to be done no matter what.
So, that's gotta all come out.
So, there are lots of things that can be decided if the grant's accepted. I mean, we'll have more meetings about what, what to do with the square. So, anyway, that's to be said. And when it is set, I'll let you know.
So, you probably, you think it'll be sometime in February?
I expected, I've suggested a Wednesday night in February here. And that's as far as I'm in. So, they'll get back that time. Kind of their deal. They can pick the, the day and then we'll get on SkoC and that'll determine when, I assume. I'll let me anything out soon then.
I've got a quick question for Larry. Not, I don't wanna bring back up the vacation thing, just quick. Should we, instead of leaving that pending, should we refer back to committee or do we need to do anything like that with it being on the agendas and ordinance?
I think, did we table it?
No.
We just.
No, no, there was no motion taken on it.
And then your ordinance for changes.
I think we're okay.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're covered.
I think we're okay.
What you gotta do is be sure I bring it back up again. And I will. If there's no further business.
He was gonna tell them about the insurance.
Won't you tell them?
We redid our health insurance for this next year. It'll be about a six percent increase in premiums. They added a five hundred dollar deductible. We've never had a deductible before. We've always been fortunate but in order to keep that premiums from coming up more than ten percent, we had to do that.
What world do we live in?
Well, it was gonna be a seventeen percent increase in premium if we didn't do so. And our, the premium is a whopper.
But overall, it's, it actually made the program better. They had big meetings with the employees today. The office visits are a little less expensive. The co-insurance is a little less expensive. So, overall, it's a better plan. You just got, you've just got a five hundred dollar deductible, which they didn't seem to be too.
We've just got to be careful. There'll be a day when they did, we'll have a decision to make on deductibles. And there are lots of plans out there for five thousand dollar deductibles. And most, most employees can't handle a five thousand dollar deductible. And so, you just almost shoot yourself in the foot to provide insurance when you got a five thousand dollar deductible for people. If you're trying to take care of employees, that's not gonna do it. That's true, too.
I think, I think there's more deductibles, three to five thousand than there is five hundred now.
Well, I'd say a hundred to.
Yeah.
One.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no further business, we need a motion to go in to close.
I'm like a motion we're going to close.
I'll second that. All in.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.